Thank you everybody for joining us this evening. This is our annual budget hearing in advance of the vote on the budget on May 21st. And so what we're going to do tonight is run through the budget. I'll give a brief introductory remarks and then I'll turn it over to Tom to give a little more detail. I'll just start by describing, and I'm on the, I guess I'm the chair of the Budget Committee, so it's appropriate that I give the remarks. I just want to spend a minute on the process that we go through to come up with the budget every year. It starts sort of at the beginning of the year with our director and his team really making an assessment of what resources they need, both, you know, physical resources, people resources, et cetera, in order to meet the needs of our patrons, in order to meet the needs of the community. So it's a very bottoms-up approach. What we don't do is take the prior year's budget and just assume that's what the budget should be for the next year, or assume that it should be a similar increase to last year. We do a detailed analysis, starting with Tom and his team, to really look at what the needs are. And then Tom will come to the Budget Committee, which is a subcommittee of the Board, and present the budget. And present, what we do is we ask Tom to work up several different scenarios. We ask him to work up a scenario where we keep the budget flat year over year, no increase in the overall budget. We look to him to put together a budget that would have us be in line with the tax cap, which this year is approximately 2%. And then we ask him for a third budget, which is sort of what, you know, if you had your wish list, what would it be? And so that's our, that's sort of our starting point. And then we, as a Budget Committee, review that. In those discussions, the high, the sort of budget that was, which, which, I can't speak.
Suicide.
The wish list budget started at an increase, I think, of about...
Six, six percent. Yeah, almost six.
About six and a half percent. And then, and through discussions with the Budget Committee, we were able to get that down to a 3.9% increase. So the Budget Committee looked at a flat scenario, 2% up in the tax cap, and then the 3.9% scenario. Long story short, we ended up going with the 3.9% increase scenario, which is in line with the increase that we saw last year. The primary driver, as Tom will go through, is our salaries and related benefits costs. We are governed, all but three of our employees, I think, are governed under a union contract, which was negotiated by the Board and, you know, with the union a couple of years ago. And that has mandated increases. I would note that those mandated increases that we agreed to under that contract, we did an extensive analysis at the time, looking at contracts that had been recently negotiated amongst different libraries in Westchester County that we felt were comparable to, you know, our city and our library. And we were very much at the mid to lower point of those increases. So, you know, and that, and that contract preceded one that had had very little increases coming out of the financial crisis. And, you know, so that's the main driver of the increases. Tom will walk through the details. If we had gone with a lower budget scenario, we effectively would have, at a flat scenario, we certainly would have had to cut our services and cut our operating time, you know, and at a 2% up scenario, we would have been able to meet the salary increases, but we, I think, if I remember correctly, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, we would have had to cut some of the temporary hours a little bit. We wouldn't have been able to meet any of the, the needs of our patrons, you know, additional needs of our patrons, as highlighted by the staff in the bottoms-up analysis that we described. So, so that's where we landed, and I'm going to turn it over to Tom to sort of run through the details.
Thank you Chuck. And as Chuck had indicated, our budget request will be voted on by the residents of New Rochelle on May 21st. There are two aspects to this election as far as the library is concerned. The first element is our budget. We are asking for an increase of 3.9% over the current year's budget, which translates out to real dollars of $213,012.70. And that, that increase is 3.9% in total. And we, on an annual basis, we reach out to the City Finance Commissioner and ask the person holding that office to give us an analysis of what this budget means in terms of the average taxpayer. And according to the current City Finance Commissioner, Mark Zulli, he indicating, indicated that the increase will constitute for the average taxpayer of $14. Essentially, according to the finance department, each taxpayer in the city of New Rochelle pays $328.34 currently. With this budget, if it were to pass, would mean an increase of approximately $14, which would take the average taxpayer to a total of $341.60. Now, in terms of the specifics of the increase, Chuck mentioned that a large portion of the increase is truly non-discretionary, and I would characterize that as approximately 2/3 of the $213,000. Of that increase, $95,000 is an increase in full-time salary due to the collective bargaining agreement of 2.75. Chuck very articulately stated the fact that this contract has been placed for a number of years, it's comparable to our peers. He also indicated that the previous contract had been one that had been very modest. In fact, there were two years of 0% increases. And so we are very comfortable with this contract, with this increase for our full-time staff who work very hard, wear many hats, and are truly dedicated to our residents. So of this $213,000, just over $95,000 again is full-time salary increases. We see another $64,000 increase relating to fringe benefit accounts. That includes the New York State Retirement Plan increase of $38,000, a medical plan insurance increase of $16,000, social security payment increases of just over $5,000, dental plan increases of approximately $4.5,000. We also are fielding an increase in our Westchester Library System dues. The due schedule approved by the WLS Directors Group, as well as the WLS Board of Trustees, call for an increase for New Rochelle Public Library of $5.5,000. Now, there are also some non-discretionary increases I want to share with you. The largest of these non-discretionary increases relates to the decision by the Board to approve my recommendation of the library creating a full-time archivist position for our library and for our community. We currently have a part-time position, and we're finding that our collection is just not being organized, accessioned, digitized, made available to the community, not through any lack of effort, but because we don't have a full-time person devoting her or his time towards this task. As you know, the city of New Rochelle does not have a historical society. We function as that historical society, and as such, we have been the very fortunate recipient of many donations from, from people in the community that relate to photographs, other graphic representations. We have gotten many, many manuscript collections from organizations and groups. We're just not able to keep up with the new accessions as well as the material in our collection. With this position, we are asking for an increase essentially of $50,000. And we are building on the part-time monies that are already in the budget, but we'll be asking for $50,000 to make the salary a full-time salary, as well as the appropriate benefit package. So that's the most significant non-discretionary increase we're asking the community to consider at the May 21st vote. There are some smaller increases as well. One is a $5,000 increase to pay for our staff to continue to perform outreach at the New Rochelle School District Open House Meet the Parents Nights. We are very anxious to connect with our community, particularly our school population. We have great resources for our children, as well as the adults, and we found this has been a very successful effort. We would like to build on this effort and make sure that we're represented at every Meet the Parent Night, that the school district schools happen to schedule. So that's just over $5,000 for that. We are also looking for a doubling of our internet broadband. As you folks know, libraries are about books, but they're also about technology and access to information. And the internet and our broadband is, of course, one of the major components in allowing our community, many of whom don't have computers, don't have internet at home, to come in and use our computers and access computers, whether it be for homework, it could be lifelong learning, it could be health research, it could be job search, all sorts of things. So we're doubling our broadband access. That will increase our, our budget line in this area for $7.5,000. Our security guards, who are tremendous, who help keep our building safe and comfortable for everybody, they have not had a raise since 2014. Given the fact that the minimum wage has been going up each year, we think it's incumbent upon us to, to pay our guards what they're worth and to make certain that we're able to retain their services. And so that increase for the, for our security staff is $6.5,000 as well. And basically, that's, that's it as far as the, the budget. And again, I want you to consider the fact that relative to our library and other Westchester libraries, we are, let me make certain I get the right statistic. We are the fourth lowest per capita in terms of spending monies on library materials in the county out of 38 libraries. In terms of total per capita budget support, we are 12th lowest in the county. And in terms of paid staff, per 2,000 residents in the county, we are the lowest. So we think those statistics that were furnished to us by the Westchester Library System indicate that we try to run a lean, a leanchief. We are cognizant of the, the, the hard-earned monies that you give us. We try to use it wisely, carefully. We depend upon the monies that you give us to help us grant, look for grants and other fundraising activities. We're lucky enough to have our foundation, our friends, provide lots and lots of money to help us do the extras. Many of the physical improvements you see throughout the building are through New York State Grants, but the match is almost always provided by our foundation and sometimes by our friends. And our activities are, we're a busy library. I could run off things like we have the most patron visits in the county, and the second most reference questions answered in the county, second most internet terminals in the county, third most library cardholders in the county, third most hours open in the county, fourth most public internet sessions in the county, and the fifth most programs scheduled in the county. So we're, we're trying to make a difference in terms of all those key indicators, both for our traditional collections, books and music, video DVDs, as well as online resources, as well as offering with partnerships throughout the city and the county, social service opportunities, and great programming, cultural, educational, technological programming. And most of our programming is paid by our friends organization. So I think I'm done. I've shared a lot with you, maybe too much, but that's where we stand, and we're, would be open to any questions if people have them.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have anybody in the audience that has any questions? Please, if you'd come up, if you don't mind coming up, so, because it's taped.
Yeah, we're...
Do you have the sign-in?
We can get, it's Beth Acocella. Yeah, after she speaks, thanks, Jessica.
Hi. My question is why... Hi. My question is why will it cost $5,000 to volunteer at Meet the Teacher Nights or Parent Nights?
It's, it's not a volunteer activity. It's our, it's our staff members being paid to, to work at those events.
Perfect. That was my question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions from anyone in the audience? Going once, going twice? Okay. I think that's our only item of business, correct?
Yes.
Somebody want to make a motion to adjourn the budget meeting?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the budget meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you everybody for joining us tonight for our regular Library Board meeting. I think first item of business is the approval of the minutes, which Tom emailed around. I think I sent you a slight correction.
Did you?
Did I? I think I did.
Happy to hear it again.
No, nobody does such. Let me look.
The WLS report that Frances encouraged the board to consider screening.
Oh, yeah.
Documentary name resilience.
That was the only thing. Yeah, under, yeah, under Frances's report, I just wanted to note that you had encouraged us to consider a screening.
The documentary resilience.
Well, that's with the email.
Yeah, so if you could just add that to the WLS report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, I did talk to Ellen about it, and then she's got in touch with Tom.
Oh, good.
We should be arranging for a screening.
Oh, great. Wonderful.
We've already had multiple screenings, but we can do it again. Absolutely.
Does anybody else have any other comments on the minutes? Can I get a motion to?
Motion to improvements, like with the amendment as noted about resilience.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right. Minutes approved as amended. Financial reports, statistics, anything to note?
At this point in time, because we're meeting so much earlier, I don't have a formal set of documents, but I will say that, oh, we do, sorry. I guess it wasn't. Yes.
So it's just a, it's just a thing I noticed, it's not a big deal, but I noticed that in March, the main, our reference questions and everything went down. It's like 8,000, 8,000, 8,000, and then it dips to 7,000 in March. I was just wondering.
You know, I, Jean is, Ms. Manning is raising her hand.
Got it.
Could be.
Okay. I mean, it's not, I just was, I just happened to notice it.
In terms of our finances, I will say that this has been a challenging year because of many unexpected capital expenses, but we are actually in fairly good shape in terms of percentage of year left as, as compared to the percentage of monies left in the budget. There may be still some efforts that will be made by, by Jean Manning to make certain that all the counts that are in the negative be in the, certainly in positive by the end of the year, which of course calls for Board members to sign warrants that will indicate those sorts of efforts. But we're in fairly good shape despite the fact, again, of many, many expenses that, that were unexpected in regards to our facility.
Thank you for the tight management of the expenditures. Are there anything you want to highlight from a statistics perspective or not?
No.
W, WLS report.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I have a few things to, to bring you up to date on what we're doing in AMSSFORD, and so I might take a few minutes. First, we had, our last meeting was last Tuesday on the April 30th, and with, after a few housekeeping things, we, we looked at the financial reports of the organization's the first quarter, as well as the audit report from the committee. And I must say that the, the meeting of the Audit Committee is the, is the first meeting that I audited when they, and I attended it. And so the, the overall picture is that the organization is in good hands financially, and the resources are being well managed, so that the Board is quite happy with that. The second thing is we looked very briefly at the WLS system annual report for last year, that the Board looked at it and took note of it. I must say, and this is the record, that I have not read the report.
It's on the record.
It's got to be on the record.
Okay, yeah, I haven't looked. That's okay.
The cameras are filming as you speak.
Okay, all right, yeah. Okay, I can, I can tell you a little joke, let's put that on the record. I remember an outstanding politician in one part of where I came from, the, the country belongs to had just adopted a constitution for the country, a long constitution and so on. So this outstanding politician was interviewed on TV and said, "Mr. Secretary General, what do you think of the new constitution?" And they said, "Oh, it is an excellent constitution, although I haven't read it." So I must say that the, the annual system report is a good one, and I'm going to read it. So we took note of that. Another point I want to raise is, you remember, we talked about the, the problems that the Osning Library had, and also Greenberg with the virus. The, that matter was taken up again by, by the Board, following the discussion that, the presentation made by the Director of the Osning Library. One thing that caught my attention, and I raised it at the meeting itself, was said that the communication, that is one of the aspects of the problems that they had, the communication between WLS IT and the Osning staff did not always provide the information the library needed to share with their staff, trustees, and patrons. It took four weeks to bring the situation to a total resolution. And so the Osning Board is now considering options and other measures in order to, to address this, this situation, so that it doesn't occur again. Following this particular point, the Board has a discussion, considerably lengthy discussion about the nature of the attack that took place in Osning and Greenberg, and whether the law enforcement authorities were informed, the IT response, staffing, et cetera. And then we requested the Executive Director and the IT Director, Kaluori, to develop a statement regarding the event and this resolution, and to prepare a budget and a plan of action for how to guide against future issues, and provide a clearer communication and backup support for the member libraries. And so I'll try to follow up on that. So the Kaluori gave us a brief progress report on how they're proceeding in that score. We took note of it, but it was just a progress report, so we asked that the, the statement and the plan that they have in mind should be put in writing, so that we, you know, we can read it and get maybe a better picture of it. It is going to involve a budget, maybe probably $80,000. I don't quote me on that, but I think that was a figure being thrown around. But this does not involve extra money being requested, but this resource is going to be raised from within the other items that are probably under spent. Going forward, the, the Director might request that a certain budget allocation be made for that. So this is a point that is being taken quite, quite seriously, because we like this kind of problem, any similar kind of problem with the libraries, and cooperation between the libraries and the WLC is something that should, that should be taken seriously, and then problems that arise should be addressed promptly. So that, that's one. The second point is more of information. The trustee from West, from White Plains, Miss Hope First, had resigned early in the year, and so White Plains recommended another candidate, an outstanding candidate, very, very competent, Ms. Matthew Sarah. She was introduced to the Board, she was approved, appointment was accepted, and she was sworn in, so the District 11 now has a representative. The third thing I want to mention is arising from the report that the Executive Director gave to the Board, first started by talking about the, the outcome of the migration. He says that that exercise went very well, because it took a lot of involvement by the staff at, at headquarters there, and also by the staff of the libraries. But he says, although a number of issues still need to be resolved, the number of outstanding issues have diminished, and Evergreen has already shown promise as a public service tool with greater control, and I hope that our library can agree with that. I hope, but I, that's why I want to, I want to highlight it. So the Board is watching this, you know, this migration and the aftermath of it, and see how, how well this thing is, is settling in. Dr. Keshna informed us that he has been asked to, to serve on a panel with the Westchester County Association regarding service in the new digital age, with the role of the library being a digital access anchor for technology and information. This guy is involved in so many committees, this is one of, one of them, and it is good that we have a foot in, in that door. He also mentioned in passing, earlier on, that the San Francisco Public Library had eliminated the use of overdue fees. It caught my attention, maybe it's not new to you. He says that recent reports have found that fines do not ensure the returns of materials, and actually discriminate against groups struggling with poverty, homelessness, and reentry into society. I wonder what our experience is on that, but that was passed on to the, to the Board as matter of information, and some Board members took an interest in it.
We've discussed it.
You did?
We have. We have. We never came to...
No, I'm actually hoping that when the Policy Committee meets again, there'll be a series of circulation changes that we will be recommending. One of them, we would like the Policy Committee to consider, is choosing to not to fine children or teens that borrow material. Quite frankly, there are four or five libraries in Westchester Library System that have done so. It's proven to be successful. And the studies that you mentioned, Frances, I was at a, a national public library conference in Philadelphia last year, and indicated that, that fines don't always provide the impetus for people to return materials, and in fact, provide barriers for people who are struggling with using the library. And there are countless examples of young people who can't use our library because for one reason or another, their cards have been maxed out. It's, it's troubling. It's really troubling on a lot of different levels, but that's something that I hope the Policy Committee and the Board will consider.
You had your meeting, right?
Meeting on Tuesday. Okay, cool. Perfect timing.
Yeah, all right, so you know, this has been taken up at the Trustees' level as well. Another thing is the Director of Public Information, Innovation and Engagement, Ms. Elena Falcone, very vicious and active staff member. She says that our department is responsible for outreach programs, and she spoke about one of the recent programs that the department is focusing on, the community conversations. And she says that this program was designed to create a robust discussion utilizing unique and powerful role of libraries to provide a neutral space and to act as a catalyst in bringing community agencies and other interested parties together around specific topics. Now, it is in the context of this that the question of community mental health issues was raised, and how it developed into a topic of interest. And so she mentioned again the importance of libraries being involved in this community health... health issues, particularly through the use of the film, the resilience, which I said our library is interested in, let's see. She says that showing this film around libraries has generated a lot of interest, and as a result, a Westchester Resilience Coalition has been created. I don't know too much about that. Maybe she will give us some some details about it. And this coalition is is intended to help build awareness of the community about public health issues. Another thing we were informed is that the response to the celebrating Westchester Libraries' breakfast, the response to that has been pretty good. And as a result, the WLS is one of the twenty-four recipients of the National X Prize Communities Competition Award of half a million dollars. So that means WLS has something like twenty-one thousand dollars as a result of that. I I don't know too much about the X Prize Communities Competition. Maybe I'll get more information on that. Lastly, Elena brought to our attention and asked us to bring this to the attention of the libraries, the various learning resources available on the WLS website. The most significant of it, Elisa, of late, is the Learning Upgrade. I think she's going to be distributing this pamphlet around to the libraries. This Learning Upgrade is an easy, fun learning app that helps improve reading and maths for people of any age. It uses songs, videos, games, and rewards, an ideal for adult learners, et cetera. So she talked quite enthusiastically about this. And as I said, she plans to distribute this this information to the libraries and and try to encourage our patrons to to make use of these resources that the library offers. I think that that's about it. I probably talked too too much time. I mean, to thank you.
You said community conversations, you said?
Yes, yes.
And they're hosting them?
No, community, no, this is it. It is one of the the programs that they created. I believe that they're hosting that, but relatively new, and it is within that context conversation. I also suppose that the conversation conversation takes place in the libraries where the community is brought together to talk about an issue of 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 interest, one of them being the national, the the mental health, another one is probably opioid addiction, and the other ones could be, I don't know, domestic violence or whatever.
I think we should do that.
Issues like that, yeah.
I think we should do that.
So I got an impression that this is relatively new.
Okay.
And I'll go to be watching how it goes. So I'm just flagging it out. So if there's an interest in it, I can I can pursue that.
We've talked about the, I feel like, Dan, you, one of the first things you raised when you came on board was about the opioid mental health and sort of thinking about ways, so any way we can partner with someone who has like a program and a structure, and we just provide the space, then we're all we're all winning.
There's so many.
Yeah, it it's it's so it's part of my community relations report, talk about Lydia. I'll talk about it in a minute.
On your notes.
And I'll tie back. But I I also want to add something about the Learning Upgrade, because Elena sent me the information. It's 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 something that's actually really awesome, especially for adult education learners, take trying to take their GED, you know, working parents are really trying to find the resources, unable to go to the class. Just I'll read a quick description real quick. It's a Learning Upgrade is an easy, fun, and learning app that helps improve reading and math skills. It uses songs, videos, games, and rewards. Ideal for adult learners, English language learners, so it's also incorporated in Spanish and other languages as well, and students from grade school. So students from our schools can use it, and it's completely free. The app is available on both Android and iOS devices. All you have to do is download the app, and there's a special code that WLS has, which is three, three, five, five, seven, three, eight. They put that in, and if you sign up, they're raffling a free iPad or something of that nature. And you complete at least three lessons to go in and show your progress. So it's a it's a it's a pretty good free resource that is available.
So can you send it?
And all that is stated here.
Okay, can I? I'm gonna post this somewhere.
I think they're gonna distribute. Because they talked about the breakfast, right, Texas, at the libraries.
Can we post this on on our library website?
Sure, why not? I'm wondering if WLS has a a link or a PDF or a.
They're actually encouraging, from my understanding, they're encouraging the local libraries and community-based organizations to put it in their e-blast newsletters, places of worship, to use it and incorporate, encourage people. They they will provide the PDF of rack cards and all that stuff that you can promote yourself and just provide information.
That's pretty neat, so many resources.
Yeah. Thank you. The next item, I think, is the president's report, and I'm gonna turn it over to you, Tom. I don't have a specific report.
Thank you, Chuck. Relative to my report as director, first start with grants. As you folks know, the circulation desk is nearly complete. We're very excited about that, and that was the result of a two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-dollar grant through the state and a ninety-two-thousand-dollar match through our amazing foundation, whose gala is coming up on Thursday. So there are still tickets available if anybody's interested. It's a worthy cause. And we're nearly done with commissioning the desk. We just have a few, I believe, minor issues that relate to moving our computers over and bringing bringing down the walls and and bringing people in. We're very excited. It looks great. Our staff feels that at long last they have a a modern, functional space to use, both to serve the public as well as a back office area, which they've never had before. So we're we're excited, and it looks really good, too. So the next step will be, hopefully, next week, the desk will be commissioned. The temporary desk will be taken down. We'll start the process of re of installing new security gates. Somewhere down the line, we'll we'll also install our patron self-checkout elements too as well. We'll have a security gate that will be installed, and we'll also have a more attractive sort of like a band or a sign above the library as well for the public. So we're we're nearly there. I believe our 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 budget numbers look pretty good. And stay tuned, something really attractive will be opening up for everybody's use very soon.
Will we do a like a ribbon cutting at some point with the foundation?
We will. Chris Ellen, great question, Chuck. Chris Ellen has asked me if that's possible. We said absolutely, because the foundation was a key pivotal player. We we need to have that ribbon cutting just to celebrate the fact that we're finally able to accomplish this and to celebrate the foundation's ability to draw that kind of financial support.
We got we got a.
Right, and so we'll have to have our, right, our state legislators.
Local legislators, yes.
Right, and and we have another grant heading our way, hundred-and-sixty, hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, which will allow us to begin the renovations on the second floor, and the foundation will be matching with seventy-eight thousand. And we're hoping to apply for more state grant money to continue the second floor renovation. The unfortunate factor is that this current year, the state of New York had extraordinarily high amount of money in the library construction program. It's been reduced back to its original status of twelve million dollars, which means our county will see just under seven-hundred-thousand dollars as opposed to one-point-two-million this year. It made a big difference. It allowed us to obtain money as well as peer libraries throughout the county. But we're going to continue to go for these improvements to make our library, you know, a more functional, appealing place, a place that people are comfortable using. So so that hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars, we think we'll see, God willing, sometime in August, early September. We also have a much smaller grant for the Huguenot Children's Library. That is eight-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. We'll be matching, we ourselves, twenty-eight-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, and that will allow us to install a new gas furnace in our building, which the furnace is now just about twenty-five years old. So we need to do it. We've been nursing it along. So we'll we'll be seeing that in the near future. As you folks know, thanks to the good offices of Senator Andrea Stewart-Cousins and Dr. Lou with Gray, who provided a great opening, opening door, we have access, we hope, to a hundred thousand dollars through the State of New York Economic Development Grant called EDAP. And we just finished the grant documentation tonight. Thank you, Yudira, for witnessing that as a notary public, and we're hopeful that we'll get a positive response in the very near future. On less positive news, you folks know that our library had made a pitch to be the home for the future coworking and business incubation center through the downtown redevelopment initiative, the monies that were granted to to the City of New Rochelle through the state of New York, ten million dollars. We haven't gotten official word, which is disappointing, but the word on the street is that we didn't get it. So we will continue with the idea of trying to find a coworking space in our building or in a or in some sort of attached facility. We think it's something the community could really use, and so we'll continue to keep our eyes open.
Is there gonna be a coworking space? It's just we didn't get it, but there is gonna be one.
Part of the proposal includes a coworking, maybe two, actually, I thought, but definitely one.
Elsewhere.
And I will just reiterate, which I've said, I think, many times, that the wonderful thing about the DRI process is that it brought to light many really, you know, great initiatives and uncovered deep interests that I think we wouldn't have seen otherwise, and this is one of them, Tom, so don't be disheartened.
I'm not.
Good. And also, you know, we, Yudira and I sat on that committee, we had to recuse ourselves so we we couldn't scream and shout as we wanted. But I think that it's just a wonderful idea to have a coworking entity in the building somewhere, and I think there's probably other funding available for that, which keep your eyes open, as you say, and we all will do the same.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is our election, May twenty-first. The budget hearing has come and gone, and I discussed the fact that the library is asking for an increase.
Twenty minutes. Just teasing.
So so, folks, please be aware, May twenty-first, trustees' budget will be voted on. And and as part of our year-to-year effort, we reach out to neighborhood associations, civic groups, and ask permission to be invited to attend their meetings in order that we have the opportunity to talk about our our budget initiative. And to date, we have three visits. We have been at Glenwood Lake Neighborhood Association, Residence Park Neighborhood Association, and the East End Neighborhood Association. They all seem to go fairly well. We have three more that are scheduled. Sometimes they appear at the at the eleventh hour, and I'll keep you all posted. But we have one Thursday evening, which will be the Reform Club, New Rochelle Reform Club, and the New Rochelle Confederation of Neighborhood Associations, be at the American Legion Hall on Thursday night. It is also, unfortunately, the night of our foundation gala, and most of us have been committed, but Whitney and maybe Cory, too, are, these two fine people, even though they have tickets, will be attending the the meeting in order to talk about the library budget vote and also discuss, introduce themselves relative to their candidacy for the upcoming May twenty-first election. We also have another Neighborhood Association meeting at five o'clock this this Saturday at Mount Joy, and one more Stratton Stratton Hill. And is it this Saturday, Mount Joy? Isn't it this Saturday?
I think it's the eighteenth.
Oh, it is?
It's the eighteenth.
Okay, that's good.
It's Saturday, the eighteenth.
Don't show up.
No, I'm not.
And what's the other one?
There's another one.
The Stratton Hill?
That's.
I have it here, let's see.
There's Mount Joy, Stratton Hill, and then the Neighborhood Confederation.
Yes.
The ninth.
When's the Stratton Hill?
I think it's the twenty-eighth.
You're right, it's right, it's the sixteenth, is Stratton Hill Neighborhood Association at Young Israel of Scarsdale, and thank you, Chuck. Mount Joy is the eighteenth, Saturday, at five o'clock.
We're paying attention. We have to go.
Yeah, yeah, well, obviously, I'm not paying attention. I'm glad I'm not chipping up.
Well, there haven't been updates in a while. So Stratton Hill is five sixteen at what time?
Five sixteen at seven-thirty PM at Young Israel of Scarsdale on Weaver Street. And we've been instructed to, we're on the agenda. They have asked that any candidates who are running for office, not sort of politic, that's their rule, but I certainly think for the, all the candidates can attend that night and at least introduce themselves if if nothing else.
We also go to support the discussion of the budget.
Right, and 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 that role, you're, I would hope that you would come, every board member.
We hope that you would support us, absolutely.
Yeah. So so that's that's where we stand as far as the Neighborhood Association process is. It's a little disappointing. Last year, we had a few more.
I thought so.
Groups, we did. And this year, this is probably the the fewest number of meetings that we've had in my fourteen years here, which is disappointing. And I I would love to find a way to try to reinvigorate this process and reintroduce ourselves in the community and give us an opportunity to talk about the the budget vote, which is important, the election of trustees, equally important, and just talk about the library, what we have to offer. So many of these meetings, actually, not a lot is discussed relative to budgets, and far more is discussed about what's going on at the library, programs, services, you know, issues that might relate to development. All those sorts of things come up, and the budget's important, but it's almost secondary. It it gives us a chance to sort of toot our own horn and to share with people. So if we could find a way to sort of reconnect with other groups, it would it would be great. Let's see. Just as far as our friends, our Great Friends Group is concerned, the book sale just completed. The next one, June seventh, June eighth. The Friends Board Meeting is tomorrow at one PM, if anybody's available. And the Friends, on a on an annual basis, will hold a volunteer luncheon. The date is May twenty-ninth. Invitations haven't been sent out, but certainly all trustees are welcome to attend, as well as our esteemed WLS representative. I believe it's at Posto Twenty-Two. So stay tuned for those invitations. They're usually a lot of fun, and it's a great opportunity to thank the Friends for their extraordinary service, day in, day out, relative to what they do for the library, both financially and just as advocates. The foundation, I've already mentioned, the gala is this Thursday evening. It's turning out to be a huge success. Last I heard, over three-hundred-and-fifty guests were planning to attend. It's at the Green Tree. It's been moved from another beach club because they had the foresight to know that they were not going to, that this particular site wouldn't be able to hold the people that wanted to attend. So so it'll be a. I think it's six, isn't it?
It's at six.
Six. Is it? Anyways, but it promises, you know, there'll be the, and I think it's worth mentioning that it's really a look at the past and a view of the future, and they plan to honor the founders of the foundation, Leslie Dimas, Bill Handelman, and Lynn Green, all people who are still volunteering twenty-five years later, because the foundation was founded twenty-five years ago. And so those three terrific people will be honored, as well as the people that created the partnership for the Huguenot Children's Library, which will be merged into the foundation sometime this year. And there are three couples that were instrumental in reviving this building and bringing it back online as a functional building and as a children's library, Tom and Teresa Leghorn, the Ronans, and the McCaves. So all great people as well. So it's another reason to attend to thank these people for all their work on behalf of our libraries.
And and I gotta I gotta say, that same night, I mean, it's fantastic to hear those numbers that people in our community and outside are coming out that same night, is also the YMCA Gala.
That's right.
And and the Westchester Humane Society Gala, and yet we have a fantastic turnout, so kudos.
Wow, that is a, I knew the YMCA, it's just amazing, but people are, according to what I've heard, they expect that there'll even be more people choosing to attend at the eleventh hour, and they say they can handle it, so that's that's good news. Francis?
Now, I say, put it another hat, as President of Rotary Club, contribute, made a donation to the foundation to the, the foundation to the gala.
Three hundred thousand, I was gonna be really, it's like, I didn't know the road.
Three hundred thousand, wow. Something happened with that treasury that I wasn't aware of, and I'm a. Something happened with that treasury that I wasn't aware of, and I'm a Rottary. All right. I guess it was a big, big night at Foxwoods.
You guys put on a great gala, by the way. It was like to the point, and we were out of it. It was great. I learned from you.
Agreed.
A great night. There are two more Foundation Board Meetings coming up. One is May twentieth, which will be typically the opportunity for us to present our budget request for next year. The major component of that is, of course, the seventy-eight thousand dollar grant match for our second floor renovation. We are looking to continue our extremely successful and ever-growing in terms of popularity, museum pass program, and there may be a few other elements too. There's money left over. They still haven't given me an exact count for what we have access to of other programs that the library could use their financial support. And in your packet, I just want to point out that I prepared a potential library board meeting schedule for next year. We don't need to take action on it tonight, but I'd ask you to look at it, you know, make certain the dates are correct. If there are any conflicts relative to any religious holidays or other holidays, maybe we can vote in June. Sure. I'm done.
Thank you.
Something about the Neighborhood Association meetings. Why not hold them with the library as much as they discuss library issues?
I'm sorry, Francis?
Neighborhood Association meetings.
Usually it's somebody's house or like a community space in their neighborhood.
Like globally, I feel like it's not the only topic on the agenda. Like, I feel like usually there's parameters. So they'll say, like, you have five minutes, you have ten minutes. So to get everybody to leave the neighborhood, not that it's far, but
Well, Whitney has already found a mistake I made in the dates, so that's why. I want you all to look at it.
Look at the last three months.
Double May.
And May.
May was so darn good. We're revisiting it. Sorry.
It's a baker's dozen fifteen months.
Yeah.
I just wanna, in the transitional flurry here, isn't there an event, May twentieth, a WLS event? It was like a talk on the Yeah, it's about building libraries.
I know. I can't go, though.
Space planning.
I just thought it would be
No, I thought that was good. You were insert, you know, as a presidential, like, you guys should go.
Anybody that can go, I encourage to go.
It was really interesting.
Yep. I think, Whitney, you registered, and I registered. Cory?
I am registered.
Yep, yep.
But now I'm, but the Foundation's Board Meeting is that night. I don't know which one I signed up for. We signed up for. I have to look.
I think it'd be great if just a person or two could go. I can't go. I thought I could go.
I'll try to go to one of them. I don't know which one. What's that?
He'll go to the Board.
Okay, perfect.
Oh, good. Okay.
Wait, which one? Okay, so maybe I'll go to the Foundation's meeting. Done. Tag team.
And then if you could bring back, like, support back.
Knowledge.
Knowledge. Sounds good.
I think next, do you have a personal report?
I do, a fairly brief one. In terms of new staff, I'm asking the board to pass a motion that would allow us to hire a page who is working in the tech services area. Her name is Cassandra Chen. Her start date was March twenty-third. Her salary is twelve dollars per hour. So
I'll make a motion to approve that page is noted. Can we get us all in favor? Hi.
Thank you. A resignation ties to the hire. I'd like a board motion to accept the resignation of Jishan Jifry, who sadly, great page, great person, left us to go on to bigger and better things, including marriage. Her last day was also the twenty-eighth of March. Her salary as she departed was twelve dollars per hour.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation. Can I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
And I think it's worth noting that one person is missing tonight, and that, you might have known, has noticed, is Mary Kane Passacreta, who is a senior library clerk. Mary retired as of March thirtieth of this year, and we will miss her. We had a wonderful goodbye party for her a few Fridays ago. And Sarah was kind enough to be able to attend to say goodbye to Sarah. And we read a letter that Chek, that Chek wrote.
You're being generous.
Well, anyway.
I surfaced the idea. You wrote the letter.
Okay. Anyway, so I would ask for a motion to accept the retirement of Mary Kane Passacreta.
Do we have to?
Sadly, we do, because Mary is home and enjoying a new life.
She's living her best life.
Probably not missing us, maybe a little bit. Her salary was fifty-six thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars.
Make a motion to accept the retirement of Mary. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move on to committee reports, Budget Committee. We've already covered that. We beat that one to death tonight. Building and grounds committee, Sarah.
Thank you. So last month was the submission deadline, April eleventh. For the building audit RFPs, we received three of those that were reviewing individually. And then I think next week, we'll be meeting with the CROC Committee, which is comprised of our experts in the community, who were very grateful for their services to us. They're architects, so they're going to help us decide on who we will choose to move forward with the building audit.
Can you remind me of the date of that CROC meeting?
May seventeen.
May seventeen?
Yes.
At morning?
If that works for you.
Does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Yep, that's it.
Thank you.
And for the elevator update, Tom will give the update.
Always a pleasure. It is coming along. I'm happy to say, after many, 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 many months of being without an elevator through a certain number of pitfalls and arguments, et cetera, the company in question is on site. They have been here for about a week. They came back, which is a good thing. And we're hoping that by the end of this week, early next week, the elevator will be functional. And once it's functional, we do need it to be formally tested, you know, we need
I think that's wise.
Yeah, yeah, all things considered. So I'm hoping that in a short period of time, our elevator will be back online. At that point in time, I think we will sort of consider the matter and see if we have to take other action. We will see. But, but things are moving forward. The vendor was here today, made good progress. Frankly, every day we take photographs and we share it with our consultant. He will be visiting on Thursday, just to make sure that everything is going the way it should, that we're going to have an elevator that has been installed correctly and will function without major problems for the next twenty years. So we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Water in the basement.
What's that?
Water in the basement.
The water in the basement, it has been fixed. The waterproofer did his job. We are still working with that. We implemented another solution for the actual, for the pit area, and that has, that has been taken care of. It looks, it looks good. You know, it looks, it looks really good. So It is exciting and long, long needed. And our apologies to the community and to the staff, frankly, where we had to go without an elevator, which is a real disservice to people who are older, who have problems with mobility, young families, et cetera. It's, it's been, it's been a challenge. But, you know, the community has understood, and we have made accommodations whenever and wherever possible.
Thank you, Tom. Community relations. Okay, so, community relations, I sort of have a little extensive report here. With the budget vote being around the corner, I want to highlight some important things that have been happening. So April Vacation Week, all the vacation programs were well-attended and appreciated. We had so many participants for the three workshops that they had to run double shifts, a live theatrical performance, and a visit from animal embassy were also filled to capacity. During the Vacation Week, programs are made possible by the Friends of the Rochelle Public Library. National Children's Book Week, thanks so much for the generous gifts from Sarah and Steve Sonnet in memory of their mother, who was a former librarian, conducted a fabulous week-long celebration of the hundredth anniversary of National Children's Book Week and the library's hundred-twentieth, twenty-fifth anniversary. The Friends of the Library also gave significant support to this very successful, memorable event. If you do not view the library's Facebook and Instagram posts, they're asking for, please, please make sure that you get on board. A picture is worth a thousand words, and the pictures from the week's events speaks volume. Children of all ages and their parents, caregivers, grandparents were engaged. Music, movement, and storytelling each day. Preschoolers were treated to fabulous array of programs in the children's room, continuously decked out with a spectrum of a hundred-twentieth anniversary helium balloons. Scores of children, adults danced, sang, heard stories, laughed a whole lot. On Wednesday, May first, two hundred, two hundred budding artists and their siblings, parents, grandparents visited the thirtieth annual Our Children, Our Artists exhibit, and then packed the theater for a brief ceremony before enjoying homemade refreshments from the children's books. On Saturday, May fourth, the library hosted over two hundred children again, and this time, families listened to a terrific author-made party hats, books, and tambourines and finger painted before parading with Bad Kitty and the Shinbound Alley Stilt Band.
We have photos.
Yeah, they were online or something. I saw those.
Through the Ruby D Park and into the Ozzy Davis Theater. Loads of noise and fun, and over two hundred homemade Rochelle Public Library birthday cupcakes eaten by kids. We don't even have stats on how many kids took advantage of the book Find Amnesty, but we know that each of the principals announced in it, in the elementary school, and about five thousand, five hundred flyers went home with students. That's a lot.
Yep, we got two.
Adult programming. The National Library Week began with an excellent Read Six Fifty forum, which featured top writers reading their five-minute pieces on my library, Zumba, Yoga, Needle Work Cookbook Club, Open Mic, teen programs, computer classes, and a super film series also took place in April. The AARP Tax Preparers wrapped up their free service, free servage, service with which helped over one thousand people to complete their tax forms. That's amazing, a thousand people. And I repeat, for free. The Community Relations Office was also offered three stellar concerts of classical music and made possible by the Friends of NRPL. So, Community Connection, and this goes back to the point we were talking about, mental health and opioid. NRPL hired our new community service specialist, Denise Link. I met Denise Link about a week or two ago, and now has a regular schedule providing, and this goes into the article that I sent you guys about libraries having social workers in there. I don't know if you guys took a chance to read it. But she's, she has regular schedule, providing one-on-one assistance to patrons in need of a wide range of services. So in her first full month, in a position, Denise helped fifty-five patrons connect with services to help find employment, housing, and benefits, and guides them through an online application for employment, either SNAP benefits, certification programs, Section Eight, and a host of other tasks. Denise will also help patrons that are doing the task prep, formerly known as GED, and restarting a literacy program to be conducted by trained volunteers. So if you want to become a trained literacy, part of the trained literacy provider, volunteer, you know, go into the Community Relations Office and definitely ask for that. And, yeah.
So how do we get Denise? I don't want, I think Denise is good here, so we don't want her to be at the schools. But how do we make sure the schools know that she's a resource? How do we? Because like, we can call somebody, but it goes into the hole. So
PTA council? No.
I mean, that's one way.
I think that's a start.
Okay.
That's a start. I think also, if we can, when we're distributing applications for library cards as well to kind of give information of that specific service, I think, I think part of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, not only her helping people, but I think because of this position, I mean, her efforts, she would probably have to hit out in the community and let people know. The best way to, for any kind of community type of service, is showing up where the people are to know about the program for some time. But when you continue on with the quality of services, like this is fantastic. In one month, fifty-five patrons connected a whole different services. This is good information. This is good of people feeling confident. And I believe she's bilingual.
She is bilingual.
And she's bilingual.
A longtime New Rochelle resident, children through the school system. She's a great person. She's been a part-time employee for us for almost twenty years. And she's just has jumped into the job with just a great spirit and success. And she, part of her job is to be on the floor, work in the Help Center, and assist people, as Dan articulated. But the other aspect of her job, and probably that's where you met her, Dan, was, is to go into the community and make connections with the various nonprofit groups because we have so many relationships with nonprofit organizations in terms of offering services. And we, we wanted one person to sort of manage it all and just keep up, you know, kind of keep it together. And honestly, Denise is just, she's new, but she's doing really well.
I have an idea. For September, can we put together either a brochure? I'm thinking of like, you know, a debt card or something that each school gets, and it says, what does New Rochelle Library have to offer you? And it has like the number of the children's library, and it has kind of her number and like a quick reference card that each principal could get, and they could put in their office or something like that. Do you think we could do that for September?
It would be, yeah, absolutely.
I wonder if we also want to include the social workers that are at the schools, or I know that some schools share them. But sometimes when it gets to the top, it doesn't trickle to the place. But the social workers are probably connecting them to the resources.
Right. I would even go further saying, if perhaps she can host or invite our school counselors and social workers to a quick breakfast in the morning and talk about the services. I mean
So both.
Both. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do think, I think it'd be good to have, for people at the schools, to have like this quick reference, like, what do you guys, you know, offer? Maybe, or if they're kind of like, we don't do that, maybe they do. But I think a breakfast too would be nice.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just, it's, it's, it gives the opportunity to ask questions of how, you know, because there are questions, you know, you can connect, but to know the person behind it is
So can you do that for September?
Right. So I just want to restate to make certain I understand. Yudra, what you're proposing is that we create almost like a ready reference sheet that relates the various services that we offer children and families?
Yeah. I'm thinking, and I can come in and talk to you about it. I'm not thinking of like a sheet like this. I'm thinking of
Five by seven.
Like a tripe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like a one side, like a five-by-seven stock card.
Yes.
With just like the names of like, even, even the job readiness, this woman Denise, like bullet points, very little words. You're like in and out. You just want like, we can share, we can probably connect and just lay it out.
Yeah, absolutely. We could work with Denise and Barbara Davis. And we have a really great graphic designer at Roxanne Map. Yep, it all can be done easily.
Little magnet.
Yeah, just, yeah, just to get us out there.
Okay.
So the last, last few things here. So in regards to resilience, Westchester County Department of Community Mental Health will be doing a screening in conjunction with the Westchester Resilience Coalition, which is a coalition that seeks foster individual, family, community resilience in Westchester County. Variety of different service providers are involved in that. So they're having a screening on resilience with individuals, professionals that are going to talk about it and our documentary with a discussion and how resilience can be supported and strengthened in our communities and how our community can respond. That will be May twenty-eighth at, from ten A. M. to twelve P. M. at the Westchester County Department of Community Mental Health. That's in White Plains, Conference Room Two One Seven, eleven, twelve, East Post Road. So if anyone is interested in just kind of seeing how, it's not just talking about resilience, but how we as a community can, can address those issues and whatever level and partner and collaboration. And then there's a, for anyone that may be interested, that may be interested, it's being sponsored by WOAPSY, so the Westchester, I'm trying to, Alliance for Black School Educators. Thank you.
It's not WOSPI.
WOAPSY.
WOSPI.
WOAPSY. They're hosting a introduction to restorative practices completely for free, May 11th. I know it's a Saturday before Mother's Day, but it's completely free from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. They have a fantastic trainer that does the training for the entire New York City school, New York City district. And he is a former administrator from the Norishell Public Schools and is, is doing this introduction to restorative practices. And, and the last two things is for any youth that's looking for employment, summer youth employment applications are out. The Youth Bureau, the Guidance Center, Norishell High School is going to be hosting a youth job fair on Friday, the 10th, so anybody wants to participate as an employer. And on May 20th, there's a lot of things going on on May 20th, but they're inviting providers, educators, and anyone that is working with youth or young adults, primarily young, young adults, to participate in a high-level learning and discuss, discuss symposium called Exploring Alternative Career Pathways. It's going to be hosted at the White Plains High School Library Media Space, and it's done by the Westchester County Putnam Workforce Development or the Career Centers. I, I have the privilege of being on that panel. So if you would like to join us for breakfast and hear engaging opportunities of why our middle skills jobs and young people or young adults are not having the skills to achieve in the workplace nowadays, you have President of Rockland Community College will be there, Superintendent from White Plains, Dr. Hamlet Carver, myself, to receive the whistle from Westchester Community College, and Oran Barrett, who's, he's created Cool Nerds Club. It's moderated by Tom Kleiner from the county. So I would encourage you, if anybody has some time in that morning, May 20th, it's completely free. Everything's online. You can Google it.
Thank you. Finance Committee, I think we need to meet. My fault, we missed our last meeting. Do you have an update?
No, I just looked at the numbers. There's nothing really...
Okay.
No news is good news in finance.
That's probably true. But we need to, we do need to meet to look at the, you know, the potential one-time expenses.
Yeah.
Who's on finance?
I think it's...
Chuck, Daniel, and Stan.
Oh, no, they know.
That's right, yeah.
It's all guys?
I know, I can't believe that.
I said, yeah, wow.
One, two, three.
It's all guys?
Point's gone.
I don't think that was...
Yeah.
That wasn't right.
Just, I'm like, usually have a keen eye for this.
The Needs Assessment Committee.
So we've been working on just coordinating with the RFPs that were answered and coordinating our schedules. It's been pretty hectic because of spring break and travel obligations. So we opted to have a meeting after the election, see who's here, who's not. But we're still moving ahead with it. I've actually just personally taken on talking to a couple of local residents at Ward and Albert Leonard and Webster on what their needs were, what they wanted to see. I got a lot of feedback on the kids' library and can we expand it? And what, how, what are the options there? You know, so different things, you know, why don't people know more about this library? Why don't more people come here? So, the Needs Assessment Committee is more about not just the development, but it's really what the people want. So it's important that we continue to have those conversations with the people, so we understand what they want. And so that goes beyond anything that any outside forces may have or want to have with the library. So we'll reconvene or we'll reconvene after the election.
Great, thank you. Personnel Committee.
So, Tom, I'm to say what you sent me?
Yes.
Okay. So, with the personnel, Tom had some suggestions. He wanted the Personnel Committee to review. He wanted us to look at the two custodians first. Two of our custodians have been working really overtime, filling in other positions. And so do you want to say a little bit more?
I do, I do. Thank you, Deirdre. You've heard me talk quite a bit about our, our project in the circulation area. And we did not hire a project manager. We decided to distribute the duties amongst ourselves. But what has turned out is while I've been very involved and our tech person has been involved and our head of circulation, our two custodians functioned over and above and functioned not just as project managers, but actually as construction, actually in construction roles that related to carpentry, could be electrical, it just across the board. And they did this while we were down, one of our full-time custodians due to his untimely illness. And they have worked really hard, in particular, Rob Florin, our lead custodian, but the other custodian, Mike Abruzzi as well. And they have just worked over and above and really out of job class. And we couldn't have gotten where we are right now and saved the money and did the great quality work I think we will, we will all see and enjoy without the effort. So it was my request that the Personnel Committee consider and recommend, and then the Board vote, on a salary enhancement award for these two gentlemen who have been truly working out of class. Rob Florin, our lead custodian, $1,000, and Mike Abruzzi, who is one of the general custodians, $500.
And we happily approve that.
Bless you.
Thank you.
In addition, we just wanted to publicly announce the 2019-20 salary increases, and these are outside of the contract. So they're all for 2.7, 2.75 increase for Tom Giuffino, Barbara Davis, and Jean Manning.
I would also mention, as far as Jean is concerned, that the increase be tied to what was agreed upon at the last board meeting. And I understand certainly that it has to be looked at on a year-by-year basis, that the increase also include the librarian three-step increase using the same mechanism as we would any other employee.
Yes. And we're going to look at that. And in addition to that, you will be doing...
Evaluations for, for those two people. And I'm working, I have, I found a series of service evaluations and the Personnel Committee liked one in particular. So we're going to be going forward with that. And I'm also encouraging that when we negotiate our next union contract, that we have service evaluations so that all supervisors can evaluate their employees, not in order to provide punitive damage, but just to start a conversation. And it doesn't have to be tied to any sort of financial element. But I think something that we should really have in place, certainly it's been my experience in all the other places I worked, and I think we're ready to consider that as well.
Well, we don't do reviews, so you guys know. We have, don't do reviews in this, on, on this team. And as we started, as we did Tom's evaluation, as we started talking, we realized, we all realized, some of the feedback we got from the staff is how much they love Tom, and they'd love to hear his feedback because they respect and value him so much. So we are trying to build that into how we work going forward in the Personnel Committee.
And it wouldn't be just necessarily tied only to myself and my, the staff that report to me, but it would be the librarian's threes to the librarian ones or the twos, or the senior clerks to the clerks that work underneath them. It would be a whole process where conversations would begin that would relate to, you know, work and how well it's being done and constructive criticism, goals, objectives.
And I think part of the, you can, it's so much going on and appreciating how much the library, it's not just books. We all know that. We can all conceive that. But just as we think of visioning and working with our fundraising partners, ways to sort of identify big goals and needs that we can get the community behind to help improve the library. So I were excited, I think that was part of the emphasis. We were just excited to sort of see that documented somewhere and keep moving it along.
Makes sense.
So that's all I have.
So we need a motion?
So, the motion to sit, the motion again is on the bonuses, the $1,000 and the $500 for the custodians, and the increase for Barbara Davis, Tom Giuffino, and Jean Manning. So, I'd like, should I make a motion? Yeah. I'd like to make a motion for the salaries and bonuses I just spoke of.
Second.
All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Marvelous.
Thank you all. Thank you. On behalf of our staff who deserve it. Thank you.
My pleasure. Policy, we just set a meeting time for Tuesday, so we'll be able to report back in June.
Do you, do you want me to attend to Tuesday?
I think you can send, we have the, it's, we have, there's still finalized sexual harassment and the, and the...
Fun balance.
But if you want to send us the, the suggestion regarding the over, the over ladies, the over ladies.
And there's a, the fees and there's a few other things.
Because I think we're going to be meeting in the evening, so it's not, it's not...
Can I just make a, let's see if it's something that the Policy can, Committee can review? I was speaking to a couple of, you know, community members from Norishell as to why some of them do not use our library and they would prefer to go to Larchmont or somewhere. And one of the things is, not only we know that we have to pay for parking in the city, and that's nothing that we can control, but one of the things is the holds on books.
We don't have that any longer.
Yeah, we got rid of that.
We got rid of that.
So did we, did we, I mean, how do we get the information out?
It was in a newsletter, because I remember bringing it to my church and talking about it. That's why, because I was like, nope, nope, I haven't. But maybe we can do better getting it out, because I do agree with you. There's, that's still a misconception around books.
Yeah, because I had someone like, yeah, I don't go, I don't, no need to go to downtown, because, you know, they live on the east end. They're like, I'll just swing over Larchmont, you know, I don't have to pay for parking, and I have to pay for a hold, so it's not happening.
You know, a big ticket item for the Needs Assessment Committee, this is like big lofty goal, is, you know, if we could ever do something to offset some of the parking, it would just be wonderful.
I heard that.
So I don't know what it could be, but I'm sure there's something out there. If we put our brains together, it would be wonderful.
You know, it's interesting. Princeton Public Library, a number of years ago, renovated, probably 15 years ago, and they entered into this relationship with, with the city and a developer, and they were able to have access to a parking garage and provide sort of like a stamp discount. I mean, that's the sort of thing.
Yes.
Yeah, a validation. I mean, if we're dreaming big, I, I, that's one of the complaints we hear time and again, that people have to pay for parking and that it seems unfair, and there are other options where they can access libraries at, at no fee. I think it would be great.
If they're just going to someone else.
Well, some do and some don't. I mean, or some do go both ways. You know, it's interesting.
Grocery stores and supermarkets, if you shop at their place, they can stamp your, your thing for your first three hours or whatever it is, you know, by purchasing, we can, I think, there's a possibility to figure something out.
And it's even, maybe that's something the friends can do. I mean, we should really think about, you know, how we're asking them to use the money they use, and are there ways to be thoughtful about. So it's just something to think about, because I do think it's a, it's a big issue.
It's a huge issue.
Yeah, I think it's a huge issue, so.
The Special Projects.
Special Projects.
Special Committee.
We don't really have an update about the... I did see this, yep. Yep, we are still, there's, the, the premise of what I'm talking about is that there was an idea, first, there was a potential donation to the library of large outdoor sculptures, which inspired us to start thinking about where we might put them. And then, when we found a place, it inspired us to think even bigger and potentially create a sculpture garden. So not just, you know, one or two, but invite other artwork into our library grounds. And we, we then kind of were working in tandem with the foundation, the Library Foundation, who created a kind of a rendering, a mock-up. And, and that's kind of where we are. So there's, there's no further information about donations. Not sure if the original donations will actually come to pass, but I think the outcome of this process is to, to recognize that, that we could really beautify the courtyard on Memorial Highway and create a place to invite art and appreciate art on our library grounds. And that's it for the committee. But I will say one other art-related plug, which is that Marjorie and, and Dorothy helped me find my daughter's artwork, which is out there in the lobby, which is, you know, it's a proud mom moment. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there any support that you need from the Board or from Tom, from the Sculpture Garden thing or not?
Tom and I are going to speak. And then, if there is, we will certainly let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. And then, as we do each year, around the time of the election, we have to reappoint officers to the Board. So we're not doing that tonight, because obviously the election has not occurred. But we need to form a nominating committee, and I'm going to pass it along to my Vice President to make a recommendation.
Recommendation.
And the role of the nominating committee is to nominate a slate of officers for the coming year, which will happen after the election.
So, the recommendation for the three people from the nominating committee is, first of all, Chuck, who will not be an officer. But I actually think it's a good idea.
That's my limit.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea for the past president to actually be on the nominating committee. They understand everything from kind of a high view. Whitney and Daniel, who've just been on the Board long. So that's my recommendation.
Is that a motion?
I make a motion to recommend Chuck, Whitney, and Daniel for the nominating committee. All those in favor? All those opposed? So, y'all will need to meet. Do they meet after the election then?
Yeah, I think that would make sense. And obviously, if there's any outcome that negates one of the members from being nominated.
We'll deal with that then. But you'll, you, so know that that's the nominating committee y'all will meet. I know, that's...
Things happen.
Things happen.
Yes. So, next item of business is the public to be heard. First person on the list is Marjorie Sacks. Okay. Dan Miller. Okay. Beth Akasoa. This is an uneventful topic to be heard.
I know, nobody has anything to say.
Very disappointed.
She already spoke, I think. Her name was on there before.
I think we are, I'm going to make a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
I don't have a vote.
Thank you.